Let's start our meeting now. Councilmember Vance Navy, can you attest that we have a plural present?
We do.
And the record shows that Dr. Tony Proctor is absent and we wish him continued recovery in his injuries. Reverend Ben Mott, will you give us an indication please?
I pray. Dear heavenly Father, we approach you the only way that's ever possible, that's in the name of your son and our Savior. Thanking you, Lord, that your name is a strong tower we can run to in the day of trouble. So this gathering, Lord, we ask you to guide us, your presence and, Lord, your wisdom. You say that you are not the God of confusion and you command that all things should be done decently and order. You know our frame, you remember we are dust, and your wrath remember mercy as well. Forgive us where we fail you. And, Lord, we thank you for our community and your blessings upon it. But as this council is charged with a very solemn responsibility to oversee our local government, I just pray, Lord, that you would guide them with wisdom and direction and let them be a blessing, a channel of your blessings upon this community. And, Lord, you know what is in man. And I pray that tonight's proceedings will be done for the good of all and with transparency for our community. I just ask your provision. Thank you, Lord, that despite our offenses, Lord, your mercy is great. And I just pray for this meeting to be blessed and productive for the well-being of our community. In Jesus' name we ask you. Amen.
Councilmember Kirk, if you'd please.
Yes, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you have in front of you an agenda that has been presented, and I would entertain a motion at this time that we adopt our agenda as presented.
Motion to move, for events presented.
Kirk, thank you.
Second.
Jim, thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Council, you also have your consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion at this time that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Ann, thank you.
Second.
And Kirk, thank you. Motion and a second. Any discussion by council on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Council, the Pickens Utility Coordinating Committee has partnered with Georgia 811 to promote National Safe Digging Month each April for the past five years to coincide with the onset of digging season. And for that reason, tonight, we are going to do a proclamation. So at this time, I'm going to ask all of those who are in the audience to come forward for the proclamation. Philip, that looks like one of you and several others. Council, if you will, please come down off of the dais. Get me back to go, because here I'm talking.
Hey, I was there, hurry.
Well, I just barely made it today.
Whoa. I got this nice chick right here.
Smile. Big smiles.
Okay, so this proclamation, whereas thousands of times each year, the underground's infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety, and whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site, and whereas the Pickens Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System and Georgia 811 in an effort to reduce these damages, and whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility. By using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Jasper can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected, and therefore, I do hereby proclaim on behalf of the City of Jasper, the month of April 2023, as Jasper Safe Digging Month, and encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Georgia to always contact 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. Now, this gets you. Thank you so much.
That's what. Thank you for that. Thank y'all. Thank you for my.
You needed to have two.
Yes, we got two. We got one earlier.
So you're happy. I know you got one. So what? Thanks. We will just.
Mayor, can we get one more picture?
Thank you.
I want to get David up here. David, can you come up here and get a picture with us? You can. I'm here. All right. Come on, man. You're just something around. You got to come up here with us.
You're about to get your best shot, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay, big smiles.
Awesome. Thank you.
Now, don't go anywhere. Just be spun over to the end right here. And our next order of business is swearing in of a new police officer, Christopher Lauter Milk Jr. Chief Dawkins, will you bring this there?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we would like to take a minute to introduce Chris Lautermilk Jr. and his wife, Barbara Lautermilk. Chris started with the Jasper Police Department on March 27th. This year, Chris Lautermilk is a resident of Pickens County and has been in law enforcement since August of 2020, where he started with the Pickens County Sheriff's Office. So we are proud to have Chris as part of the Jasper Police Department family, and at this time, I'd like to ask Chris, along with his wife, to come up and we will swear again. I, Chris Lautermilk Jr., police officer for Jasper, Georgia, do solemnly swear that during my ordinance continuance set office, I will to the best of my skill and ability faithfully uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Georgia, and in all cases conform to and enforce the laws of the United States, the state of Georgia, and the charter ordinances of Jasper, Georgia. I will execute the orders of my superiors and in all cases comply with the rules and regulations governing the City of Jasper Police Department, and will report any violation thereof to my superiors. I will not prosecute the innocent, nor shield the guilty from prosecution or punishment, nor will I be influenced in the discharge of my duty by fear, favor, or affection, reward, or hope thereof. In all my acts and doings, I will be governed by the rules and ordinances applicable to the Jasper Police Department. For the tests that I have read and fully understood, all rules, regulations underlined in the Rules and Regulations Manual for the Jasper Police Department. That's work.
Hold Mark up. You can stay right in your picture. We all will come in here now as councilmen. I'll let it come in on that. The leadership place. Come right here.
Come on up.
Right here. Come right here.
Don't you ride in front of me because that makes me. I have a good picture of his hair.
You're going to see her.
I wish to.
With Brooks standing up front a little bit.
Ah, sorry. She's almost.
Perfect analogy, please. Chief.
What's wrong with it?
Thank you. Thank you. I want one more, Tim.
Yes, sir.
If you will, I want one with me and this young man right here. You've been pretty misfired. Useful for me.
I'm sorry.
So it's amazing how things turn in your life and come back to you, but I was always so proud of this young man. I still am. Thank you. Okay, under new business, consideration approval of Georgia City's Week Resolution, uh, number 2023-04. This resolution showcases the Georgia Municipal Association and so many of the services that they provide to cities. So I'm asking for approval of this resolution for designation of Georgia City's Week.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-04. Second.
You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Consideration approval of Budget Amendment Resolution 2023-05, and we're going to ask our wonderful Lindsay Wigg to bring this to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Chief Financial Officer.
So you will find in your packet, um, the recommended final budget amendments for 2022. We're trying to wrap this our 2022 audit, and this is one of the things that, um, we needed to complete. Do I have any questions on what's included in that resolution?
Councilman, I entertain a motion to approve the Budget Amendment Resolution 2023-05. So moved. Jim?
Second.
Jim, thank you. Any discussion by council?
Congratulations to staff for this. Getting it done now, we'll be able to vote on it probably at the next meeting.
We were having, they're having to have everything ready for us to present and we're going to present it now.
I stayed long. We had to do it by June, so maybe a couple of steps ahead on this one.
Yeah, we're going to knock the hand this, this year, so.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Consideration approval of Resolution 2023-06, extension to our temporary moratorium. We'll ask our city manager, Sonny Jamis, to bring this to us.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Um, you have before you the final steps I have presented to you in your action form of what we need to complete in order to finalize our zoning ordinance. I know it feels like we've been working towards this for a very long time, but all your hard work is culminating to the next couple of months. In order to complete these final steps, we will obviously need additional time for that. The, uh, the, the ordinance, the revised ordinance as it stands is currently in the hands of staff and our project engineers, project manager of our engineering firm. And then our zoning map is currently being updated to reflect the new districts and overlays that's going to be included in our revised ordinance. So the, and in addition, the final drafts of our master plans on the development and utility will be presented, hopefully, to City Council this month, once we get a date together. So having all of those complete sets us up for being able to send those final drafts to our committees for review and approval. That would be the Development and the Local Infrastructure Committee and the, of course, Zoning Ordinance Revision Committee, and hopefully, the intention is for staff to have that completed this month as well. So after all of that is complete, then we start the adoption process, which would go to, um, go to our zoning commission in order to have the advertisement and go through them for approval. And then, um, we obviously have to post it for 30 days and then have a public hearing on it, and then it comes back to council. Um, we post it and have a public hearing on it. So obviously, all of those steps need to be taken into consideration, and so therefore, um, we're asking for an extension, the final extension to the moratorium, um, in order to, to complete this very necessary ordinance revision.
So we will have a report on our master plan before this final 90 days is up?
Yes, sir.
Great, great, great. Council, entertain a motion to approve the final 90-day moratorium on our, on our extension.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-06.
2023-06. Thank you, Kirk.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Item four is consideration approval of Resolution 2023-07. This is the DCA Appalachians Regional Commission grant, and our Assistant City Manager, Kim Dowd, will bring this to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, with GMC's assistance, staff submitted the pre-application package for Phase One of Pro Park to the Appalachian Regional Commission in early March, and I am delighted to let you know that a couple of weeks later, we received notification that we should proceed to full application. So we have been busy pulling together all of the information that has to go in that full application package in order to meet the April 14th quarterly deadline. We want to achieve this deadline because we have heard that there are at least four other projects that will be submitting full application packages for ARC's review at this time. They have only so much money to give out in a year's time, and we want to make sure that this project is included in with that so we can be evaluated and hopefully granted an award. I come to you tonight because we were made aware, after being told to go ahead and proceed to full application, that with construction projects, which is what the Pro Park project would be, there is actually a higher limit that you can request in funding. So instead of that $750,000 that we believed would be the maximum amount that we could request from ARC, there's actually a million-dollar maximum request from ARC. So we have submitted, kind of changed our pre-application around, resubmitted that to ARC to get approval to go through the process for a million dollars. The good news is, is that with this additional money, we were able to pull back in a critical component to the project, and that is the addition of restrooms in Phase One of the Pro Park project. Northwest Georgia Regional Commission strongly recommended that we do whatever we needed to do in order to pull restrooms back into Phase One, because with that application, you are proving that this is going to bring, um, economic growth to our community, that this is going to encourage tourism. You have to identify your project and correlate it to the goals and the strategies that DCA and ARC have set forth for community development. And restrooms in a facility where you are wanting to bring additional people in to have fun and to stay longer in Jasper with a fund is certainly a key component of that. As a part of the full application, we are required to submit a letter and, uh, basically this resolution indicating that the city is, is agreeable and has the funds available to provide that 50% matching funds. And so, um, we have preliminary cost estimates right now. I, in your packet, I have provided the two cost estimates, both for Phase One and then for the overall project phase, and with the addition of restrooms, we believe that this is going to be right at $2.1 million. With ARC's grant that we hope to receive, we would need to fund at least $1 million. We have squashed funds, and then we have some other things that we will be targeting as well to make up that difference, but I ask you tonight to approve Resolution 2023-07 regarding the city's commitment to provide that minimum 50% matching funds requirement. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Where do you anticipate the, the other funds to come from?
Well, that's a good question. Yeah, um, so squashed, obviously, um, we have some other things that.
We have some fund balance, too.
Yes, so fund balance. Um, we have had very initial conversations with other folks about potentially corporate sponsorships, things like that. Not enough for me to talk intelligently or confidently before we need to move on.
No, I understand.
I'd like to make a motion that this be approved. Resolution 2023-07, I have a motion. Any second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries, and thank you for your job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you for your job. Break down.
When do you anticipate if that, if you receive that grant for this term?
Um, that's a good question as well. So from what we understand, once our full application is into DCA, there could be several months before we hear anything, because it's got to go through their internal review process. It, it eventually goes to the governor's office, and then it goes to the ARC on the federal level. So, um, even after that point, because there is a construction component, it will need to go through, there's a historic preservation review, there's the Army Corps of Engineers review, there, there's all of those other agency reviews that everything will go through. So unfortunately, I don't think that we'll be shovel-ready really what we'd like to be, but, um, this is just one more step to get us closer to being able to, to get to that point.
Well, and I ask that because I know we've got some other projects we're looking at. Hopefully, we'll be done by the time we get this, but I know that's a longer process and, and stuff. I was just curious.
It is. It is, and I had talked with ARC about the potential of leveraging maybe some underground opportunities, of which they are not particularly in support of. They, there are some concerns with using federal money and federal money from other areas as well, so we'll, uh, we'll just need to figure it out.
David, aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, consideration approval of the city of Jasper Utility Placement Details, and Kim, we're going to let you bring that to us, too. Thank you.
Well, hello. So it's fitting tonight that the folks from the UCC were here this evening to, uh, talk about safe digging. One of the other things that they have been strong proponents of is a standardized utility placement detail that can be used really utility-wide across the county, and the benefit to that is that whether it be us or whether it be Pickens County and their land development process, everyone is handing out the same information. You have, um, developers that understand where utilities should go, and then it also allows for proper separation between them. It just lays out those corridors. Uh, when we first got the planned detail from the UCC, there were a few changes that we felt would be beneficial, uh, to the City of Jasper. One of those was to shift the location of the gravity sewer main from the center of the roadway to the center of a travel lane, because that cuts down on the impact that our work on our facilities may have to the traveling public. And then there was also a dimension that was given on the sidewalks, and we didn't want to be tied to a dimension, particularly not four feet wide sidewalks, since the push is towards a larger multimodal pathway, which in many cases can be six, seven, or eight feet wide. So we've left the sidewalk with no dimension on that for us to address during the development process and, and planning through projects. We have discussed this at our Development and Local Infrastructure Committee meeting. That was at the beginning of March, and the direction from that committee was to make sure that the UCC had no issue with our planned changes on the details. We took that revised detail to them, to the UCC, um, on March the 7th, and there were no objections to the changes that we had proposed either. So I'm back tonight to talk to you all about, um, approving these placement details. It's also very timely that GMC is finalizing our development standards, the details as well, and we'd like to get this, bless you, like to get this included in with that work with your approval tonight.
Thank you. Council, entertain a motion to approve the, uh, City of Jasper Utility Placement Details as presented.
So moved.
Kirk, thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Jim, thank you. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, consideration approval of Resolution 2023-08, the appointment of our city zoning official, and we will let Sonny bring this to us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Look at Campbell over there.
I'll sit down. In 2022, general essential changes in the zoning law, um, require that made it incumbent upon the elected to designate a zoning official for each locality, uh, to perform duties under the zoning ordinance. So in order to remain compliant with these new laws, um, we are requesting that City Council appoint our new dynamic planning and development, um, director to be the to be the zoning official for the city of Jasper.
That seems pretty straightforward.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that this be approved for the city planning, city zoning official be approved.
So, this is Resolution 2023-08, appointment of ME Burgess as our designated city zoning official. I like that, so...
Second.
Have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close saying. And the motion is carried. Item number seven, consideration approval of ordinance 2023-05, theft of services. Wow, Lindsey, would you please tell us about theft of services?
And so, the Water Department's been working with Mr. Saifan to incorporate a theft of services ordinance, which hopefully this will help deter any of our account holders from pantering with our meters or any connections. If they do, it'll help us to recoup some of our costs to replace the meters or connections or actually find them for anything doing, anything illegal to our water service. David may have some more he can add to it, I don't know. I'm not out in the field, so... But we have let the Enterprise Committee review this ordinance, so we're hoping to get it put in place.
Thank you, Lynette. This time, council, a motion to approve ordinance 2023-05, theft of services ordinance.
This was approved by the, recommended by the...
Enterprise.
Enterprise Committee, and I'll second the motion.
Anne, thank you. Jim, thank you. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close saying. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consideration approval of WPCP Expansion Resolution 2023-03. We're going to ask our city attorneys, Dave Saifan, to bring this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. As council knows, we have been working on the sewer plant expansion project. As part of that project, we also have a force main component that's going to reroute the treated water to another location. In order to do that force main, we of course have had to acquire easements that the force main would go along in order to do the project. And as part of that, the Development Department, Shaw and Coleman, Ronnie Waters, Assistant City Manager, Ken Goldner, have all been working hard to acquire easements. The good news is that of 14, 15 easements that we needed, they were able to secure all of them except for one. So, with that one easement, due to the fact that the parcel is subject to a conservation easement, the Conservation Board feels that it's more appropriate that the city acquire the easement way that we need by way of a condemnation proceeding. And so, the resolution before you is basically just recognizing that sewer plant expansion and the force main component of sewer plant expansion is a public project for public purposes, and it authorizes the city departments to do what you sort of previously authorized, and that is negotiate with the property owners and hopefully acquire easement ways by way of negotiation. And then it further authorizes that if we can't secure all the easement ways, then it authorizes the city to file a condemnation proceeding in order to acquire that easement way. And as part of the procedure of condemnation is that a government entity can only exercise the power of condemnation for a public purpose. So, the resolution is establishing the authority by which the city can exercise the power of condemnation and specifically finds that this project is for a public purpose. And so, if we can't negotiate that final easement deed, then we'll have the underlying authorizing resolution by the council that'll allow the city to properly file condemnation to receive that easement way for the force main line. And so, it's, but hopefully, you know, it's looking like we'll have to do a condemnation, but as the resolution notes, we are going to try to negotiate a little more, and if we don't get anywhere, then we'll proceed forward with a condemnation. And I'll be glad to answer your questions, but we need a motion to approve that resolution.
Council, I intend a motion to approve the Resolution Number 2023-03, which is the WPCP Expansion Resolution.
Second.
Second. Have a motion, thank you. Kirk and Anne. Any further discussion by council?
Thank you, David.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close saying. And we will proceed with that. And I think along with that, item number nine is consideration approval of amendment to legal services for the WPCP expansion and force main. And we'll ask, Dave, if you will, please explain this to us.
Yes, when we entered two years ago into the legal services agreement dealing with sewer plant expansion, you know, at that time, I think we were all hopeful that no condemnation would be required. And so, at that time, the clause for legal services was with the expectation that we wouldn't have to do a condemnation proceeding. And so, it's looking like we are going to have to a condemnation proceeding. So, this is amending the legal services agreement, basically to add in the legal services for having to perform that condemnation. There's a flat fee in the contract if they do not challenge the condemnation compensation. And, but, the way condemnation works and part of what your resolution authorizes is that we can do what's called a quick-take condemnation. And under the quick-take condemnation, the city or county, the entity doing the condemnation, can basically get title to that portion of the property that they need for the project in like 90 days from the filing of the condemnation petition. So, that's the good part of the quick-take is you get title to what you need to do the project fairly quickly, and it lets the project move forward in timely manner. So, the part of, though, under the Georgia Constitution, a governmental entity that engages in condemnation has to pay fair and adequate compensation for what's acquired from the private property owner. So, even though we get title to what we need to do the project fairly quickly, the property owner does have the right to request a jury trial on the amount of compensation to be paid. And so, the jury trial, of course, you're like everybody else. You're sort of subject to the court's schedule. And so, the determination of the amount of condemnation compensation can be much later after the 90 days where you acquire title. And so, if, if they don't contest the amount of compensation, then the flat fee quoted in the legal services contract should cover that. If they do challenge it, it's one of those things that we don't know because it's a jury trial, whether they're going to put up one appraiser or two appraisers, you know, whether you got to put up an engineer or whoever else. So, that part of the legal services agreement, if we get there, would be on a per-hour basis as set out within the contract. So, basically, this amendment to the contract is just to handle the condemnation. Part of the fees quoted, we got to get a survey because you have to describe legally what you're acquiring from a private property owner. And we also got to hire an appraiser to come in and say what the value of what's being acquired from the property owner is worth. And so, all those costs are also built into the contract. So, we need a motion to approve this amendment to the legal services contract, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Council, I intend a motion to approve the amendment to the legal services contract for the USDA project.
Second.
Thank you, Anne. Have a second, please.
Second.
Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close saying. And the motion carries. One quick clarification, if I might. Mr. Saifan is, when you were talking about the quick-take condemnation, would that mean that you could go ahead and start the project without having the approved price for the property that you're going to pay?
Yes.
Because a court case might take a year?
That's right. We will literally have title to what we need to do the project,
but we don't know what it's actually going to cost us until...
How much we're going to pay for that title.
All right. Just want to make sure council understands that, so thank you.
But it lets the project go forward without having to wait for the total resolution.
Thank you. Many reports, public safety and judicial, the council members, Bradfield and Stacey.
Mayor, council, as far as public safety, both departments have momentum. The Fire Department is currently advertising for the Fire Marshal's position. We're actively seeking someone to fill that role. We have a new ladder truck headed to us, so we anticipate that to be coming in the next few weeks. The renovation of the station is completed. I've toured the facility right as it was nearing completion. It's a vast improvement, so thank you for the support on that. I believe the chiefs would agree. There are three spots in the police department right now we're looking to fill, and we have three brand-new vehicles that should be getting to fleet, we anticipate, by the end of May. And back in the Fire Department, Rescue One is actually going to be, the new Rescue One will be in service shortly as lights are currently being installed.
Thank you. And Parks and Properties, Dr. Proctor's not with us. John, I don't think you...
Yeah, we didn't.
So, that's what I thought, so we'll skip that for this time. Enterprise Funds, Jim Linney and Dr. Proctor, Jim?
Enterprise Funds Committee met on March 22nd. There was discussion of the wastewater plant update and progress. A lot of the things that we've already voted on this evening were discussed, and thank you for your votes on that. Just a quick update on the AMI work, the new meters. As of the time of this meeting, we had 3,335 meters installed. That is moving well, and I think they were expecting over the few weeks, over the week after the 22nd, to have some good weather and move closer toward implementation. Master plan, I think City Manager mentioned earlier that it's, it will be presented to council at a retreat scheduled soon. Other than that, the committee is continuing.
Thank you, Lynette. 3,835 is out of, out of the total of around 6,000, I believe, is that correct?
3,335.
3,330, out of 6,000, okay. Development, local infrastructure, Kirk and John?
On this committee, we did have a meeting. As mentioned earlier, we're in the final moratorium extension. It's been noted through the public and through multiple meetings. We appreciate the patience of the public. We know that this has been frustrating on some party's behalf, but this city wants to do it the right way. And so, we do not want to have the same mistakes as other committees have made. We're doing everything we can and taking all the time necessary to make sure that we avoid those. Pleased with the UCC and the utility placement. Thank you, council, for supporting that and passing that. And in this department, as far as staffing itself, thank you for the movement on the part-time. And as far as training and education, the new director has implemented a direction of increasing both, so thank him.
Thank you, Kirk. She's doing the card. When was that thing?
April 29th.
Going to do your class for the blue card?
The blue card, well, it's March 29th. We're doing the red card on the 24th and the 25th.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask the administration, Stacey and Jim.
Yeah, I want to recognize the staff are putting together in the employee recognition process. They are doing that, they're doing a great job. I think it's made a great impact on employees as well. I think everybody that has seen that knows that. Of course, we're anticipating the audit, and I'd like to thank the staff as well for doing the hard work that they've done to get this far.
Totally agree.
Very good employees, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
No, that's a bad...
And thank you all for being here. I greatly appreciate your attending. I would, at this point, intend a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?